All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the 2023 Wauwatosa School Board Candidate Forum. Can everybody hear me okay? I see some thumbs up. Thank you. Now, this event tonight is hosted by the Wauwatosa West High School Parent Teacher Association. And it's an opportunity for the public to hear from each candidate running for the Wauwatosa School Board in the spring 2023 election. Our purpose in hosting this forum is to create an impartial and informative event so that the entire voting community can learn about the school board candidates. The election is on April 4th, 2023. As part of the National PTA, we are always advocating for all of our Wauwatosa students. And everyone here cares about the district and the students. So I could ask a little exercise here. Please stand and remain standing if you have ever served on the executive board of a PTA. That's like the president or the vice president. Please stand and remain standing. Yeah, you do. Also, if you've acted as a PTA committee chair or an event chairperson, please stand. Please stand if you are or have ever been a member of a PTA. I see. Looking good. Nice. Please stand if you've ever donated money or baked goods to a PTA event. And also, if you've ever attended a PTA event, if you've ever attended an event, which that's everybody. So take a moment to look around and give yourselves a round of applause because we're very grateful. We need to go forward. So for this event, we are following the rules for non-profit, nonpartisan organizations and the National PTA. This is a nonpartisan event, so please, if you've brought campaign paraphernalia like buttons and such, please remove or hide your campaign materials during this forum. We want to maintain an environment of learning and listening. And we're keeping our Wauwatosa students at the center of this discussion, at the center of this forum. So therefore, there will not be any cheering, clapping, shouting, or any other behaviors allowed. It also disrupts our Zoom audio. If anyone does choose to be disrupted, they will be asked to leave the forum. So let's take this opportunity to get it out of our system and thank the candidates for being here. And thank the forum today for doing the event. Now, this is not a public forum, so there will not be any live Q and A during the session. I apologize. We have prepared seven questions, and each candidate will receive two minutes to answer each question. The questions were chosen from the Google form. And thank you for everything to everyone who submitted a question to the forum. They were screened by the planning committee. Now, any questions that were submitted and are not asked and answered tonight, we will send those to the candidates. And you will find that some of them may put them on their own platforms. Any unanswered questions could end up there. Okay, let's get started. Our moderator tonight is Daphne Lee. She's a Wisconsin PTA leadership chairperson and president of the West Alice West Milwaukee PTA Council. Daphne is also a parent from West Alice and a teacher in South Milwaukee. So please join me in welcoming Daphne to the podium.
Thank you very much for that introduction. Yes, my name is Daphne Lee, and I will be your moderator this evening. I'm very happy to be here, supporting a neighboring school district and in my capacity as a Wauwatosa PTA leader. Thank you very much for the Wauwatosa West PTA for inviting me this evening. Thank you to all of the volunteers for organizing this event. And I know how hard all have worked to make sure that this event is a benefit to your community. But thank you for that. Candidate Philip Morris, running unopposed for seat four, was unable to be here this evening, but he did submit a personal statement, which I will read now. As a parent of three children, two of which are in Wauwatosa schools, I'm dedicated to ensuring that our district provides the highest quality education for all students. I bring a proven track record of advocating for transparency and accountability within the organizations and boards that I represent. I will push for rigorous academic excellence, safe classrooms, and fiscal responsibility. And I will ask the tough questions that Wauwatosa families and stakeholders deserve. I'm an experienced and trusted civic leader that serves all of Wauwatosa. My experience includes leadership roles in the numerous mayoral appointed roles as well as nonprofits. And I have extensive experience in successfully expanding funding for numerous programs and organizations throughout greater Milwaukee and Wauwatosa. Although I am new to Wauwatosa School Board, I will serve my community by giving a unique perspective on school budgets, the need for fiscal constraints, and taming the current circus of playground politics. As we collaborate to retain the best teacher talent, develop the best district support staff, and work to redesign our schools for the future, I'll bring my passion, experience, and dedication to the task. I believe in supporting our teachers and staff as they educate our children, and I'll work to make our schools safe, accountable, effective, and efficient for years to come. For both conservative and liberal voters looking for a school board member with a proven track record of no-nonsense leadership, supporting public education, and advocating for all children. This is a statement from Mr. Philip Morris. We will now start our live questions with our present candidates. We'll begin with an introduction from each of them. Each candidate, as Eric said, will be given two minutes in this first question to introduce themselves. Please remember, speak into your microphones. We have two. And for each end of the table. And for each of the follow-up questions, we will rotate which candidate leads off, so everyone has a chance to be first. All right, so our first question really isn't a question. It's to introduce yourself. Tell us what motivated you to run for school board, and tell us about your favorite Wauwatosa school activity you have attended or have been involved in. We'll start this round with Ms. Heimerle.
Hi there. My name is Liz Heimerle Rowland. I'm running for seat five. I am running because I have been a strong advocate for not only our school district, but for also public schools for like, for about the past 10 years. I've advocated strongly for adequate funding for our schools, and I have probably led every PTO committee at Lincoln Elementary, including PTO president twice. That gave me the opportunity to really see what was going on in our schools. And I will say that my favorite, I can't pick one. So my favorite social activity at the school is the school dance, even though it's somewhat chaotic, but I think it's hilarious to see all the kids dancing. And then the, my favorite activity I've been involved in is I helped lead the committee to have a community service day at Lincoln Elementary. And I still kind of advise parents and staff for that activity still. And I'm proud that it's still going, and it happened even during COVID, and other schools have sort of followed our lead. And I believe there are the handful of schools that are also doing community service.
Good evening. My name is Chris Zerbas. I'm running for seat five of the Wauwatosa School Board. I'm a dad who loves Wauwatosa. My wife and me and I are blessed to have three kids, one at less than two at Whitman. I've lived here for 25 years. When I moved here to Tulsa, it was this great little neighborhood community. You were proud to say you lived in Tulsa. You paid higher taxes, but you had a great school district. Today, we're still paying higher taxes, but we need to work on some things around our school. My kids love the donuts and cranky elves. We spend hours, more hours than I can imagine, in line there. Sometimes that line is out the door and around the corner. But to get 30 or 45 minutes on a Saturday with my kids means the world to me. I'm running for school board. I'm running to make the school board better, not only for my three kids, but for all the kids in our district. Our district should be proud of ourselves, and our community should always continue to be engaged. My favorite activity, I'm one of the field coordinators over at the high school here on Saturday mornings for junior Blazer football. East Absorbed or West Absorbed East a couple of years for the junior program. And it's amazing when you are driving the four-wheeler around how many eight-year-old, nine-year-old little kids come running out of the bleachers that want to help. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lynn Worley. I'm running for seat six. I am a parent of three children, Madison Elementary, Whitman, and West. And I settled in Wauwatosa in 2002 to be near my parents. Those parents are in fact part of the inspiration for me to run for school board. They were both teachers. They both took time being school administrators. My mom was in Creek K and my dad in high schools. And I'm a teacher myself. I work for UWM where I'm at Mount Mary as an undergrad teacher. Now at UWM, I'm grad, program teacher and director. And as a program director, I've learned a lot about being an administrator, having employees, working with budgets, and dealing with grants and assessment. So all that together, rolled together, I feel like I bring a lot of experience and knowledge to the board. I also really am kind of a data geek and a policy geek. So I love these kinds of experiences where I get to think about where are we and where could we be? And then for my favorite, it's really hard for me to choose, so I'm going to have to be well-rounded like my family is and say soccer and orchestra. And in orchestra, I've had the honor of organizing some of the receptions for the orchestra at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here, and also thanks to the PTA for organizing this. I know it was no small task. My name is Daniel Gugala, and I'm running for seat six as well for the Wauwatosa School Board. I've been in Tulsa resident for 25 years and absolutely love this community. When my wife and I first moved here, we thought how fortunate we were to be in a community with such great schools. And we were so excited to actually start a family and send them to Tulsa schools. And for a long time, that was true. And you know, our experience has just changed over time. I have a junior here at West now and a seventh grader at Whitman. And the experience was just very different for the two of them, just in terms of, you know, situations they were in, you know, some of the physically assaultive behaviors that have impacted my family, as well as the loss of teachers as part of that process. And it's definitely motivated me to want to run for school board. I've been in the community like I said for 25 years and spent a long time being a coach in the program and really working with kids and recognizing that they all have unique talents and they all have really strong capabilities that they can bring to moving forward with positive results. And I thought I could bring that same energy to the school board. Quickly, by way of background, I'm an attorney. I work for a number of growing companies, so I've had a broad range of experience working with policy, working with regulatory matters. I've managed teams of individuals in compliance, as well as teams who've done data analytics. So I recognize the needs of understanding data, pulling information together, and being able to use them. Done, or does that mean like, okay, I'm sorry. I meant to check there. And so I want to be able to bring those skills to the school board to really kind of help us grow. Again, Tulsa is such a wonderful community, and I know we have such a fantastic opportunity. We maybe slipped a little bit here, but that just means we have so much more opportunity to continue to grow. And I want to bring my skill set to that and my energy to that to help us make iterative changes so that we can get back to the place that we deserve to be, that everyone in here knows that we should be, and love our school just as much as we love our community.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you to the West PTA. I know how incredibly time-consuming and how much work goes into putting something like this together, so thank you. My name is Jessica Willis. I am the only incumbent running for my seat. My family moved here about a year and a half ago from Columbus, Ohio. And when we were looking at districts where we wanted to land, we wanted to find a district that was a high-achieving district that was welcoming and inclusive of all kids. And I'm happy to say that we have found that in Wauwatosa. I come with a public education background. I was a special education teacher for the past 16 years. So I really dove in when moving here, and I started subbing in our buildings last year. And I saw all the really wonderful things happening in our buildings. But I also saw the opportunity to create spaces that were more welcoming and supportive of all of our students, especially some of our most marginalized students. Being a biracial woman, having a black family, and having that special education background, I saw that there were opportunities that we can create a culture that is supportive of all students. That is really what propelled me to apply for the vacant seat on the school board. I also had a great group of parents who were rallying behind me. I jumped in right away. I was part of our Jefferson PTA. And in being part of that, I was part of the Equity Committee. And when the president had stepped down at the time, I took it back to the Equity Committee, which was a group of Jefferson parents, and extended even to some of the other elementary schools. They really rallied behind me and said, you know, I think Jessica, you can bring a really important perspective to Wauwatosa. And so I applied for the vacancy. I've been on the board for eight months, and it's really been an incredible experience. I hope to, I'm sorry, sure. I hope to continue to use my background in public education, my experience in collaboration to really engage all stakeholders and to make our district the best it can be. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Solocoffer Jr. I'm running for seat seven. I've lived in Wauwatosa for 17 years now. I'm married for 18. We both have kids that both attend Wauwatosa West here. One is a freshman and one is a junior. I'm a real estate agent. I've been in real estate industry since 2003. My skill sets and what I've learned is the ability to listen, problem solve, negotiate contracts, and, you know, earn people's trust. Ultimately, my job is to close the deal. Yeah, I'm known as Mr. Closer. And Google seems to agree. If you just type in Mr. Closer, your screen will pop up. Anyway, moving along. I was a crisis stabilizer mentor in the past. I've worked with kids in the inner city. I was a positive role model for kids and families. I worked with social workers, therapists. And we met each kid's individual needs and goals. I was a volunteer. I am a volunteer at my church, a youth leader. I volunteer also in this community as a coach. I was coaching the junior Trojans football team. Now they're known as the Blazers. Of course, TPL basketball team. I've been volunteering within my kids' school in the past many years, chapter one. I was at the museum, the zoo, went to state Capitol, and my big one, Lebo Field, signed up for that one. I don't think I was at the tour that morning. I volunteered Fridays at Whitman with the WAC school dances. Basically, I tried to volunteer as much as I could to keep an eye on my kids, obviously. But ultimately, I wanted to have a goal to, you know, build relationships with teachers and students and staff. I wanted everyone to know who my end was, dad was. Why am I running for the board? Well, I'm running because I love Wauwatosa. I've been here again 17 years. I volunteered in this community. I've been trusted in this community. And now it's time for me to roll my sleeves and volunteer and serve in this community.
All right. I think you guys have the order in front of you, right? So I won't say it in fact. I don't have a microphone. I'm not used to it. All right. Question two, your first actual question. What specific proactive solutions or actions do you plan to champion in order to address concerns around school safety? We'll start this one with Ms. Heimerle.
So first, I'll say that I appreciate this question because it talks about the proactive solutions that we can use to prevent these negative behaviors from being a part of our district. I think we can all agree that none of us want to hear about or see any more fighting in our schools. My background, I have been a program manager for MPS and for the medical college where I have led conflict resolution, resorted practices, classroom, I'm sorry, community building activities with youth. When I was at MPS, my main role was to reduce the amount of suspensions and expulsions in our district, which was a huge task. And part of the main part of that was making sure that students felt safe and welcome and included in their schools. I will say that we have to return to having the highest expectations for our students and our staff. I think we need to focus on mental health and social emotional learning because I think we all agree that mental health in our kiddos is a crisis right now. And we should be giving all of the resources possible to make sure we're helping the kiddos that really need it. I think that if our district staff and leadership follows the frameworks that's been presented this year, I think we'll see some better outcome moving forward because I think it sets clear expectations for students and staff. I think if it's followed with fidelity, that we'll see increased positive behaviors and a decrease in those negative behaviors. What I will say finally is that I hope that as a community, we can do a better job at sharing what we love about our district because I think our kids are always listening and watching how we interact with each other. And if the messaging that our kids are receiving from us is a negative, always a negative message, then that's what they're going to go into our buildings with, and that's what they're going to act when they're with their friends.
Since I decided to run, I spoke to a lot of the teachers, a lot of the principals around our schools. And the teachers told me that they weren't feeling safe in the buildings. We had a survey recently that said 50% of the kids don't feel safe in the building, and our guidelines that we have in place are not working. The district is gathering data for this now, but they're too far behind. These physical fights, the bullying is having major effect on our kids today. We learned a couple of years ago that kids couldn't learn when they were hungry. And now we're finding out that they can't feel unsafe, that they can't feel unsafe and learn at the same time. We passed the MOU last month, which was great. We found out during that time that a majority of these kids in the schools felt that the MOU or the SRO was one of the few adults in the building that they had a real positive relationship with. A personal story to that, one of my children suffers from anxiety at Whitman. Sometimes it's scared to use the restroom for the entire day. So we need to get this resolved.
Thank you for this question. It is definitely one that is central to our school district and not the only place we need to do work. But I'm going to go to the parenting part and say consistency. Kids need consistency, and we are just have put a lot of things in place this year. We really need to work at all levels to make sure that that's being done consistently. So a lot of change right now, I think would be a negative experience for our students and might really cause additional disruption. A few other important points. We need to not just do the high-level interventions. When things get to the point of suspension, the point of even going to the principal's office, we haven't done enough at that point. We need to layer down. We need to really provide the resources, the supports that in the classrooms, students are learning what they came, part of what they came to school for, which is how to communicate with and work with people who are different from them. That is so important. That's why a lot of us have chosen our schools to come to the schools in this district because Wauwatosa is a district that brings a diverse group of students together. We also, I would say, from my perspective, we can't scare people into positive behavior. We have to build that. We have to create a situation where positive behavior is rewarded. It's a great system in place that we can build on PBIS. Last year, I spent over 100 volunteer hours helping Madison Elementary School write and earn and receive a Department of Justice grant for over $40,000 so that they can layer in the practices in the classroom that would help students not only learn how to talk to each other better, but how to repair the situation when something wasn't going right for themselves, for their classmates, with their teachers. And there's been a lot of effort been put into that. I think it's a great resource, and I will stop there.
All right. Thanks so much for that question. So I worked for 14 years for a company, CPI. It's Crisis Prevention Institute. They're a Milwaukee-based company that provides training internationally on providing care, welfare, safety, and security for schools, teachers, to ensure that they're safe environments. So I recognize the value and absolute need for us to have safe environments for our teachers to teach and for our students to be able to learn. One of the big things I learned during that experience is that it's really difficult to understand what the challenges are and what things are happening in schools without accurate, consistent data. So one of the things that we need to continue to do, and as a board member, I would push for, which is making sure that we're doing a good job of tracking interventions that were, where the interactions we're having, the behaviors we're seeing, and make sure that we have a clear and consistent picture. And this has to happen. We have to be able to follow the students. We can't move an individual when we have issues in one school, simply move them to another and see if that resolves the problem. We have to be able to follow that through so that we can provide the appropriate interventions, so that we can provide mental health help, so that we can do all the things that it takes to ensure that those people, that those individuals are getting the help that they need to stay safe. In addition to that, we have to look at that data and recognize when there are certain trends. If we look at the recent data we saw, we can see that there's a disproportionate amount of physical fighting with black females. We need to now proactively go and find out why are black females getting into physical altercations so regularly so that we can take the appropriate steps proactively to address that. Work with parents, provide feedback loops with teachers, talk about those things. We can't continue to guess what these things are. We do a survey with our students. We ask them, do they feel safe? A lot of them say no. We don't then ask a follow-up question of why. We need to get to some of that information. Those pieces are critical for us to be able to make informed decisions and be proactive, and as a board member, I'll push for that.
Thank you for this question. I'll start by saying that not only do we need to address the physical safety of our children, but also the emotional and the psychological safety of our children. The fact is, our children were impacted by COVID. And we are seeing an increase in mental illness and mental health-related issues that we need to address in our youth. I would say that this past fall, I was appointed to the Policy Committee. And I hope that it's being seen that our district is proactively addressing these issues. The reality is that some of these policies around discipline and around expectations haven't been looked at for 10 to 15 years. And if anyone's been to a policy committee meeting that we have every other Monday, we are working tirelessly to make sure that we have the policies in place that our building administrators, that our teachers, and that all stakeholders can point back to. I have two young kids in the district. It is, you know, I want safe learning environments for them and for all children. As a board, we have been addressing it through our MOU with our SROs. This is the first time in almost 20 years that we had a memory and an understanding that really strengthened and solidified the partnership that we have with our police department. And that's another aspect of safety. Again, you know, this is a complex issue. It's not just about physical safety, but about the psychological and emotional safety of our kids. And it's going to take really thoughtful, evidence-based solutions to address those so that we not only see short-term solutions, but that we see lasting effects of these solutions. Thank you.
Yeah, so safety is a basic human need. Kids cannot learn when basic needs are not met, you know. The district told us that unless the 1% of students that are engaged in fighting yet, all students are affected, you know, emotionally, mentally, staff and all. You know, we need to have a defined, clear, defined policy in place and stick to it. I don't feel like things are being enforced, or maybe the students think they can get away with things because we're just not putting, we're not putting enough teeth into the policy, I should say. It just brings me back to being a mentor, crisis stabilizer. I'm having flashbacks as a crisis mentor. You know, these kids, they, sometimes the only safe place is the school. You know, whatever's going on at home, this is their safe place. And we owe it to the students to be able to stay safe in this environment. So, you know, the SROs, they've been a trusted adult in the school system. We love them. They've been here for many years now. We got a great relationship with them. You know, the teachers need to teach, the students need to learn. We cannot keep having these problematic behavior problems in school. It has to come to immediate stop now, and I will make sure that it will.
Thank you. Question number three, Mr. Zerbas. We'll start with you. What is your current understanding of the status of Tulsa schools' performance and underperformance within the district? And how would you seek to improve that?
We need to be accountable to our teachers. The district's proficiency scores, the last, our proficiency scores have been dropping faster than those of the other districts. We can't blame COVID forever. 10 years ago, Wauwatosa was 22nd in the state. Last year, we were 105th. Our teachers are spending more time in the classroom, doing classroom management because of the number of kids in their classroom and then not having because of the number of kids in their classroom and then not having an aide than they are actually teaching our kids. A child that's in a classroom that is bored or is not getting enough one-on-one time with their teacher will shut down. Teachers at the middle school and high schools need more aides. They need more tools. I was talking to Joel Russell of Washington last week. His elementary teachers are collaborating with other teachers in the district, especially at McKinley, planning future class plans around their core classes. What I'm working for is the common goal for the kids to learn, the teachers to teach, and for us to set up the kids as best we can.
Thank you. As a teacher, I really appreciate this question. And the reason why is because when I am in the classroom, I always need to recognize that my students with me are not learning in the same ways. Not all of them. They need different kinds of stimulation. I love to talk about the readings, the multiple readings I offer as a buffet. Come, pace, try, and then dig deeper. Find your space in the classroom. That is a big part of students being ready to learn. It's a challenging job. And while we really just need shout-outs constantly for our teachers because they are the core of what we're doing in this district. I also want to mention that our district vision, I just love it, exceptional student experience, eradicate inequalities, eliminate disproportionality and exceed proficiency for all. And again, I'm gonna remind you, I said I was a data geek, so in these things, you're just gonna have to choose between two data geeks, because that's what we got for you. So, you know, I really feel like when it comes to this, it's digging into the classroom level, it's what the teachers see, it's how the students give feedback, especially even the youngest, but especially as they get older. Our students know a lot about how they can learn. I've learned that from my kids. They pointed out all the time, I can't learn that way. I could learn that way. Okay, so I think that a lot of what we need to do is just really open that space to gather the feedback. And then as a school board member, it would be my work to help us synthesize that, to listen to what the district has found. To take all the reports, like the other night, this was the last night's school board meeting, when they were talking about the understanding, the grading process. And then later talking about starting to look into the science curriculum. And then after that, one of my favorite topics, technical education. Opportunities for students who want to learn other kinds of things besides what they do with their head, the kind of students I teach. I know that my kids are very likely to go into a multiple range of activities and I want them to have all that possibility when they go to school. So good learning, that's what it's gonna take.
So I think we sort of have a major shift across the schools and across the students. So I would venture to guess that likely most individuals in this room right now may be saying academics are going, okay, my, my student's doing pretty well. But there's a, that represents about fifty percent of the students across our schools who are proficient in math and ELA. Pretty close, they're both about the same. But there's fifty percent of our students that were just not meeting the needs of as well as we could be. And it sort of goes similarly across schools. We have the number one public elementary school in the state in Lincoln. And we have one that's struggling in, in Underwood. And so as a district and as a board member, it becomes really critical for us to understand what are the things that we're doing well? And what are the things that we're struggling with and have a plan to move forward with that? You know, when you heard, you know, the other week, if you listened to the academic, chief academic officer provide information. You know, essentially she's saying we just have a lack of viable curriculums that are aligned to standards. Well, that's a big problem if we want to get better. Because it means that what we're teaching is not gonna get the students to where they need to be in order to meet standards that are, that are set for them. They're not gonna be able to take the test. They're not gonna be able to get the results that we hope. So we have to provide more professional learning opportunities. We have to professionalize our systems and process to make sure that we're regularly updating curriculum. To be able to, to be able to ensure that the curriculum and information we're providing these students is aligned to the standards. And we have to be able to do it in a way that meets the various different needs of the populations that we have. We have a diverse school community, forty percent minority within our schools. And so we have to make sure that our curriculum is matching their needs and expectations so that we can ensure that all students are getting the best outcomes that they can and the best educational experience they can.
You know, my family moved to Wauwatoosa, like I said, because, because the schools are high-achieving schools. Now is there opportunity to get better? Of course there is. I think as a community, we need to recognize that not all students succeed the same way. And success doesn't look the same in every building. So while we may have a, a, a building like Lincoln, who on paper looks really good, we have other schools that are doing some really incredible things. And those children are achieving success. It just looks different. I do want to take this opportunity because I do think that there is a disproportionality in academic achievement and our most marginalized kids. And those include students with disabilities, kids of color and kids from low socioeconomic status. And unfortunately, we saw that opportunity gap widen because of COVID. And COVID is not an excuse, it's a reality. These kids that were already furthest from making academic achievement became even further away because of things that they were dealing with in their own personal lives. So I think we need to recognize that. We also need to use data to see what our students need. And again, this mental health crisis that we're facing, the social-emotional learning that we know kids need, we need to use those resources and allocate them equitably across the schools to make sure that those students' needs are being met and that teachers are given the opportunity to teach. And I think we, you know, Dr. Needs put it perfectly at our last meeting that kids aren't failing because of people, kids are failing because of systems. And we need to adjust our system to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our children. The reality is the demographics of Wauwatoosa has changed. And we need to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our children by updating our systems. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we need to, to do better. And as a person of color, it's unacceptable that students of color are less proficient in math and ELA. My concern is making sure that all students are being taught the appropriate level. That we need to meet them where they're, they can move forward. I mean, some, some students are up here and some students are down here. We, I mean, we gotta make sure we're keeping our kids engaged. If the students up here need to be challenged more, then we gotta make sure they're challenged, you know, they have the capabilities to, you know, take on more things. And the ones that are down here lower, we gotta make sure we're staying with them and keeping them in tune, the learning, so they don't just check out, get angry and disappointed. So I think we really need to, to focus on our academics, so we don't have this gap that we're having. And we need to, we need to set these students up for, for success in life.
So I will say my background is in early childhood education, so I taught K three head start and taught first grade. I'm now at the Medical College of Wisconsin where I work with physicians and other medical providers on their continuing education requirements. So I've designed and implemented curriculum from everyone from three-year-olds all the way into doctors. So I have a lot of experience in reviewing curriculum and seeing what the needs are. I'll say in our district right now, the audits continue to show that there's a lot of inconsistencies. So there's a lot of inconsistencies between buildings. There's a lot of inconsistencies at the secondary level between which teacher is teaching the curriculum. And I think that's unacceptable. And I think it makes it really hard to compare apples to apples and to see if our students are learning and how much they're learning. It also makes it really difficult to say, to see if what we're teaching at schools is what they're gonna be tested on on these standardized tests. Now, while I don't put a lot of stake in our standardized test scores, I know that that is sort of like what the community sees from our school. So we do need to think about how we're teaching to the standards. I think that it is unacceptable that we do have some high-achieving schools and some really low-achieving schools. So we need to look at where we're putting our resources and equity means that we're putting the resources where they belong, not that every school has the same resources. I have been to all of our schools while I've been campaigning and I will say that the teachers are really encouraged by a couple of things. They're really encouraged by the new pace time that they get on Wednesday afternoons on early release. They said that it's the most efficient, the efficient use of their time that they've had for that time. And they're also really excited about the coaching that they're receiving from the district level. I had one teacher at Longfellow tell me that this is the most growth that she's had as a teacher and she's been teaching for like seventeen years. But I think that is the testament to some of the really big changes that our district has made. I think change takes time and alright, thank you guys. Uh, question four. How will you, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Worley, that's one we'll start with you. How will you work toward unity on the school board so there can be unity within and among our school?
This is such an important question because what our district needs, and I want to say our students need, our kids need, is a strong board that is working together. We may think about things differently, we may bring different strengths, but the idea of unity would be in that unity around making sure that we have schools that serve our students and that our teachers and staff are well-paid and are having the kinds of supports and preparation time that they need. So how would I build that? Well, let me just really briefly say that I have many experiences of doing that. I lead a program in conflict transformation and peace building at UWAM in the College of Nursing. We intentionally bring students together in a cohort model that come from very different backgrounds, have different aspirations and have studied in different disciplines. We do that each year. They stay together for two years and we start our, our work off together in a three-day community building retreat, followed by coming up with how we are gonna talk to each other, conversation commitments. We very much place the center of our work, the ideas of dignity and respect of all. And I would carry these kinds of experiences forward into working with my fellow board members. I think that everyone on the board has something to bring. And that when we process together and we do it well and we really listen to each other, we will be an amazing board, whoever that is. I also want to say that in Wauwatoosa, I made a decision in 2016 to work with a few other people to start an organization called TOSA Together because I believe that where we needed to move in the city was to be a welcoming city, inclusive, especially around our history of racial segregation in Milwaukee County. I have worked with people who don't always agree with me, but we're working forward on making those policies and I will do that again on the school board.
So in terms of unity, I think it's really important for us to, as a board, to continue to build trust and transparency with the community, with teachers. You know, I see from the school board currently, you know, I, I don't know if it's so much personality challenges, but just, I think maybe just that a, a, a lack of trust at the moment in terms of the way in which they see each other, providing value in, in their roles. And as, as they come through and talk about some of the more challenging issues, they don't have the trust and confidence that everybody's working towards the same goal each time. And I think that's something that we really have to focus on and that we have to build towards as a team. That may require professional development. There are lots of ways in which to do that, but it has to start with trust. It has to have transparency. I know there's a big push in the community. I've been here twenty-five years. I love this city. I love everything about it and I love our schools. I want to love them more. And I think one thing that I would, would push from a, from a, a school board perspective is we can't hide the challenges that we have by focusing on the positive. We need both. The positives are great. We should celebrate teachers, celebrate the achievements of our students. And as a board, our role is to also say, what are the challenges and what's our plan forward? By putting all of that out there, creating that transparency, it creates a better path forward for us. It makes it easier for us to work together to recognize that, hey, we're not trying to hide this or your perspective on this being a challenge. No, we've agreed these are challenges. So now we're gonna work towards figuring it out. And it takes time to build that level of trust. But then you have to trust you're all working towards the same thing. You all want the same positive outcomes. You all want the same great experience. And in that process, we'll bring the community along. We'll get the teachers along as well so that they can see that this is where we're going.
I think as a board, we need to collectively shift our focus. We need to do this work to prioritize student learning. That's our job as a board member. We need to make sure that we can put our own individual differences aside and focus on the needs of our students. We also need to honor each other's experience and perspective, even if we don't agree. And we don't always do that on the board, but I think if we can, if we can have the opportunity to build norms, to establish norms that we all agree and hold each other accountable, then we can be a trusted, unified board. We're working towards that now, but it, you know, changes happened a lot in our district the last couple of years. But we just need to make sure that we center the work that we're doing around students. And sometimes it gets lost because we start focusing on what adults need. And we do that as board members. And unfortunately, that trickles down into our buildings, into our classrooms and into our students. They see our behavior. So I think we need to hold ourselves individually accountable for our actions and make sure that we're honoring our board members, their perspectives and the work that they bring to the board. I believe that we all care about students. But we need to have norms and we need to have expectations for one another and hold each other accountable.
Yeah, so we just doesn't have to be a level of trust. We all have to come together. I mean, we're all in this for the kids. We, we want to move in the right direction with our schools. So as long as we can all be on the same path and look at the same goal, we can all come together. We can all unite. So you know, I got into this because, you know, I, I, I seen those kind of a divide with TOSA. And, and hopefully we can, we can unite and come, and come together as as community and as board members and strive for the same goals.
So the first thing I would say is one of the reasons I decided to run now for school board is because I think there's a unique opportunity in that in, you know, in a couple of weeks, four of the members of the board will be on the board for less than one year. And we'll have three brand-new members, no matter which one of us wins. And so I think that creates a unique situation where you can kind of start over. Because I all, I think we all agree that we want a highly functioning school board. I think we can all agree that we want to see our school board less in the news and we want to focus more on the incredible things happening in our buildings every day. So with that, I, I thought this would be a good time to like put my hat, you know, try, try to join the school board. I think that there's gonna have to be a training done for the new school board members, because I heard that that was something that a couple of the school members, so they didn't really get training. So I think it's important that they know what their role is. And then I think that there needs to be some community building within the seven members of the board in April. Community, I think the community needs to focus less on the school board and more on what the school board's intentions are. We should really be doing the work of working towards what our strategic plan says. And that's our guiding star. And I think that the community and maybe some of the board members have lost that. But the board really should be focused on student learning, student achievement, making sure that our students feel safe. So I'm hopeful with a somewhat of a brand-new beginning that we can get there.
I think my open dialogue is that with the board and the parents in our community. When I was out getting nomination papers signed, the parents I talked to, parents insist on being involved in the activities. They want a direct line of communication to the board and to Dr. Needs. And talking to them, they want their ideas heard. They want to celebrate the teachers. There is a, there is a shortfall here somewhere though. We do need to rebuild this community, I think. We knew, we do need to rebuild the tradition that is the Wauwatoosa School District. I'll give you an example. Last fall, we were so proud. It was fall, it was football season and everything was great. And then there was a fight at TOSA East at the football game. And I think today, the people that have lived here for twenty-five years, that have lived here for fifty years, they've lost that love, that tradition of this city. And that's what we have to rebuild.
Thank you. Question five, Mr. Gugali, you'll start this one. The community submitted a lot of questions regarding the human growth and development curriculum. What is the role of the school board in controversial policy and curriculum discipline?
Well, we're here because we're an elected body, elected by you to serve on the board.
And I think in any of these situations, when you're dealing with controversial policy, controversial curriculum or, uh, curriculum challenges, we need to, uh, be, use, use a balance. We need to find a balance between the needs of the community and the needs of, of us as, as our role in terms of ensuring that the district is run, run well and ensuring that we're providing a great public education to the students in our district. So it really becomes a balance that we have to provide, and part of that process includes not just working together well, not just having great communication, trust, transparency in that, in that process, but it also, it also requires that we have strong feedback mechanisms, feedback mechanisms from the administration, from teachers, from parents, from the community, so that we can understand what the wants, what the desires are of the community and make intelligent decisions. The other key piece of it is that we have to have data, we should be always using data in terms, to make our decision. I keep talking about it, but if you go look at the top eight things that Wisconsin Association of School Boards says that, that a school board member should be using in making difficult decisions, it should be based on data whenever possible, and you should be using that as a means to drive forward. So I absolutely believe that it's necessary and it comes through feedback mechanisms for us to be able to collect that information. But ultimately, it comes down to trust and transparency in the process, a clean, easy, useful feedback mechanism to be able to hear from the variety of stakeholders that exist out there, and then focusing on the end goal that we want to get to in terms of providing that fantastic education and making it good, informed decisions from there.
First and foremost, I think our policies and curriculum need to address the needs of our student. It also needs to reflect our student body. I am proud to be a part of a, a board that approved this human growth and development curriculum because it is inclusive of all of our students, including our LGBTQIA students. It is important that we get feedback from all stakeholders, and I think that this process did that. This process started long before I was on the board, but it was a le, an 11, 11-month process that engaged various stakeholders, including community members, families, parents, students, educators, and district staff. There was an internal committee and an external committee, and the process was iterative, it changed. It wasn't that we, we recommended a curriculum and it, and it was accepted as is. It changed to reflect the values and the needs of our community. But I believe first and foremost, when we think about policy and we think about curriculum, it needs to address the needs of our students, and it needs to be reflective of our ever-changing student body.
Yeah, as far as this one, I, I think it was handled incorrectly, and I think we lost trust. I mean, I think the, the community lost trust in the way this was handled. And I think there was, I keep calling it a Tulsa tear. Um, there was a little bit of a divide, um, this was done wrong and policy was not followed. And that's why as a board member, I'll follow policy and will review these programs like this every three years.
The first thing that I would say about the human growth and development curriculum is that, um, I support it pretty strongly, um, out in the community. I think it's really important for our marginalized students to be included in all of our curriculum, not just our human growth and development curriculum. All of our kiddos need to see themselves in pictures in our classrooms and books in our classrooms. And I think that passing this curriculum was a good first step to getting there. I have to acknowledge that that curriculum wasn't looked at for 10 years, that's way too long in between reviews of curriculum. So I'm happy to see that our district now has a sort of a cyclical seven-year plan so that none of our curriculum falls through the cracks like that again. I think that's going to be, um, difficult at the beginning because we want our curriculum again to be changed quicker than that. But I think it's a good step to start this seven-year cycle, and that we're kind of always reviewing our curriculum. Is it working for our students? Does the data show that our students are learning? Is it meeting the needs of our students with special needs? Is it meeting the needs of our, um, black and brown students? And so I think that we now have a system in place that we're going to be constantly reviewing those things, and I think that's really important. I do agree that the community unfortunately did lose trust in our district during, um, the passing of the human growth and development. I think that some of that is because, uh, it wasn't communicated clearly to community members when the process began. And so it seemed like it was something that happened very quickly. I think that some of the data that we collected was collected poorly. Um, and that's something that the data, or I'm sorry, that the district needs to take accountability for, and we need to make sure that when we put out surveys, that the surveys are going to give us valid results, because otherwise it's, it's a waste of time. And then that, I think, is one of the biggest things that led to the community mistrust in that. So everything the district does needs to be working towards building community trust so that they do trust us with their most valuable assets, their kiddos.
I agree, uh, there is a lack of trust from the parents right now with the district. As a board member, I know we don't set curriculum, but we need to hold others accountable to do so. Uh, the recent audits and data that we've been seeing are concerning. Uh, they demonstrate that we have issues since well before the pandemic and cannot continue to blame the pandemic for our declining proficiency scores, uh, going back to 2017. We need to put our teachers in the best position to teach our students and put the students in a good position to learn. We need to be accountable to them, to include them in the process and engage them to teach our kids as our ultimate goal.
To speak specifically to this question about the role of the school board in controversial policy and curriculum decisions, what's really hard about intense topics that divide us is that we tend to move into win-lose types of mindsets. And that makes it really difficult to hear, you know, hear the, um, additional opportunities. And I think the time that we spent was spent well in gathering information. But there was a real difficulty not in just the board gathering everything, but the people who were speaking were not listening to each other, and we lost sight of our students. Our schools are about preparing our students for now and for the future. That's what school board members are asked to do, is to make sure that the schools and the school district are preparing our kids for what they need to know. And that includes how to navigate the diverse world, how to navigate differences. And as a community, we did not set a good example for our children. Nobody did. I think we all can come to that same place that we could have done better. That said, I am really proud of where we landed in the sense that people who had felt excluded before felt much more included in the curriculum. And many of the challenging ideas and interactions that our students, whether we want them to or not, are going to face and interact with as they move forward in their lives are, are now discussed not only with their own ideas, but with the ideas of others, and that is so important. I really want my children to not just hear what I have to say about things, but hear what a lot of other perspectives, their own peers, as well as adults have to say. So what would we do? We listen, listen more, research, integrate what we learn as school board members, decide, and then be open to review.
All right, question six, we'll begin with, with. All right, question six. Sometimes the loudest voices in the room can steal focus from important stakeholders and distract from the biggest issues. How will we know through your work as a board member that you've listened to all stakeholders? So I've been on the other side where I was advocating for my students, my, my students and my own children. So I understand the frustration when you don't feel that your voice is being heard. I think we all want the same thing, we all want our students to have safe, inclusive learning environments. But I think what is important is to, to find that common ground with stakeholders. I do think we have an opportunity as a board to engage the community better. Um, you know, I'm hoping to bring, you know, a fresh, unique perspective and coming from a different district where, you know, we had engagement sessions and listening sessions, especially around important topics where, as board members, they had an opportunity to, to listen to parents and stakeholders. So I do understand the frustration, and I do understand the value of making sure that our parents feel like their voices are being heard so that they don't come up to the microphone and, and lay it all out in front of us, because we, there's little we can do at that point. But we do need to make sure that we're valuing and making those parents feel like those voices are being heard. Um, I hope that you, I hope that you, it is reflected in my questions that I ask. I believe I ask tough questions as a board member, I don't just rely on, on my wants or my needs, but really honor what, what is our, what is our community saying? What do our students need? I think it's reflected that way. I also pride myself on my willingness to meet with some of my biggest critics, because I believe that we can grow and learn together. I've had coffee with a number of people who just think I'm doing a terrible job and that I don't listen to everyone, but I'm willing to meet with you because I believe at the end of the day, we all want the same thing and that we can find that common ground and work together, not work against each other.
Yeah, so we just got, we gotta have transparency, transparency, we gotta have communication, and stakeholders got to know that, you know, we're, we're, you, you're investing in these kids, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing the right things up here and that your voice is heard and that we can, you know, be accountable for things that we're doing. Um, it's, it's, it's really just leaving your ego at the door and making sure that, you know, we're up here working for you, the community. So, you know, I, I will make sure that, you know, when I'm on the board, that there's communication, and, um, my, my, my phone is always available for texts or emails or what have you. I, as a realtor, this is what I do, communicate, right? So communication is big, I think we lack communication. I think, uh, we owe it to the community to communicate back and let them know what's going on. You are stakeholders, uh, and that's it, so.
I'll say that I am super proud to say that I have been in every building in our district since January, and I've met with every principal except for two, and the snow day, um, last Friday is why I haven't met with those two. So those have been rescheduled for this week. I think, um, I have held Monday meetups for the last four weeks. I've answered every question from every interview that's been sent my way, I've funded every forum I've been invited to. Um, I've emailed back and forth with, um, some members of our community who are strongly against me running for this position, um, but I'm always willing to, to listen, to share my perspective and try to find common ground. Because it, it's true, we all want the best for our kiddos, and we maybe have a different idea on how we get there. But, um, I certainly don't know everything, and I, I, I can learn something from, you know, every member of our community. And I hope that I've shown that I do value the perspective of everyone in our community. As a board member, I will always be open to conversations, grabbing coffee, maybe a glass of wine or beer, if that's, you know, your, your preference. Um, because I do think that when we work together, we have better outcomes. We have better outcomes for our students, for our staff, for everyone on district level. A thing that I hear most often from teachers and staff is how hard it makes their job when they're constantly fighting against the narrative that Tulsa schools are dangerous, that Tulsa schools are lacking in academic achievement. And they say, look, you can see all of the wonderful things happening in our district, and the only thing the news and social media wants to show are these terrible things that I think should not happen in our schools. But there are so many more positive things that I think, um, we all need to do a better job at sharing those positive things and, um, really telling the true story of what our district is and keep working towards the highest expectations on our way we know our district can go.
One of those biggest things, I think, is that it's pretty basic, but our teachers want to teach. They have a thankless job, they love our kids, but they just want to teach. Um, it's sad that in some cases, that teacher may be the only stable adult relationship that our students have. We need to get these teachers, especially in the elementary school and the high school, I'm sorry, in the middle school and high school level, more aides in the classroom. They also need, what they've told me is they need more, uh, communication with the administration, the principals. Uh, they want to be engaged, they want the administration to stay on top of the curriculum and work with the teachers, ask the teachers for their input, that's what's going to motivate the teacher. We have a seven-year academic decline, and the teachers want these tools to teach our kids. Also, when I've been out recently, um, somebody said before, they do appreciate the pace time on Wednesday. They are doing a lot of good, uh, collaboration with the other, uh, teachers at other schools, and they do enjoy the coaching that is provided by, um, the district. But we need to protect and retain that greatest asset that our district has, and that's our teachers.
I am happily or unhappily a professional listener, that comes with the job that I have, um, in my work at UWM. But I don't, just because I tell you I'm a listener, or even if I say I understand, you really won't know that I have listened and I've really understood where you're coming from unless I take the time to express what I think I'm hearing from you and give you a chance to say, yes, that's it. Now, we may have had that conversation, but that doesn't mean that then when I go to vote on something, it will be exactly what you want. But I think you will know that I've listened to you when you recognize that when you're unhappy with how an issue came out, that you'll still know I listened to you because you may well reach out to me and say, hmm, I don't feel like you really listened to me because you didn't vote the way that I was hoping you would. And I say, let me be transparent, completely transparent about my process. Here's what I did, here's what I learned, this is what I discerned, this is how I thought about the big picture. I, our students, this is how I thought then about our teachers, this is how I thought about the needs of our parents. And I will be very clear, this is what I thought about, and when I listened to my colleagues on the board and I listened to the community, I thought outside of my own set of assumptions or stereotypes or norms, and I came to this conclusion. And it is that transparency of process that will help you to understand that even if it wasn't where you wanted things to land, that you were listened to and that you were valued. That's a really important part of being a school board member, is that process of listening.
So I think a lot of this comes back to trust and transparency of the prior question, which is sometimes the loudest voice in the room is the only voice in the room because it's the only person willing to stand up and speak when they don't know if they're being listened to. And I think just some of the challenges that we've had as a board with some of the pieces and some of the feelings in the community, some of the loss of trust that's happened, I think has resulted in a, a lack of feedback from all of the stakeholders who don't feel comfortable coming forward. And so I think it has to start with building out that trust and transparency so that people feel comfortable and confident coming to you and that you'll listen and that you'll have an intelligent conversation with them, and also recognizing that you're willing to learn, that you don't have all the answers. I don't, I mean, I don't, you don't expect me to have all the answers because I'm not gonna. Yeah, but we have so many talented individuals in our school district and administrative offices in our community who know, who have perspectives, who have professional experience, who can share so much information. And I want to be able to listen to that, I want to be able to ask questions, I want to be able to challenge those conversations and really kind of get down to the, the heart of what we have, what issues we have to solve and what things we have to do. So we have to ensure that we have trust and transparency, that we have feedback mechanisms where people feel confident about coming to us and talking to us and having really good and informed conversations. And then in addition to that, we have to be proactive. There are areas of our community that, you know, don't always speak very loudly, and we have to go talk to them more. There's, there's parents of groups of, of students who I bet we barely hear from, and we should be proactive about going to do that. We have individuals who have expertise, we have, you know, a thousand students with IUPs in our, in our classrooms, and we don't proactively go out and speak to the people who are the biggest advocates for that. We also have opportunities to go out and speak to community, there's, there's community organizations, there's, uh, city organizations which have experts on these things, and we have opportunities to talk to them as well and to learn from that.
All right, I have great news, everyone, our candidates are so concise, we're going to make it to both questions seven and eight. See, I've got that, I know. All right, so, um, we've got two more questions for everyone. Question seven, Mr. Zolakopar, you'll start for this one. Question seven is regarding the budget, what would your plan be to man- Question seven is regarding the budget, what would your plan be to manage the budget shortfall, especially in light of losing Esser funding?
It's a great question for Chris. Jeez, I tell you, I'm just gonna keep it real. Um, I'm gonna put what I put here. Um, first and foremost, I don't wanna convince you any specifics without saying the final numbers. Um, however, I can tell you that as a board member, I will always be sure we weigh our needs and our students and teachers with the needs of taxpayers in Wauwatosa. Um, I, I, we wanna avoid a referendum. I mean, that's my biggest thing. Uh, we need to maintain school resident enrollment here in Wauwatosa. You know, I'm a realtor, again, I'm gonna keep saying this. I'm working with clients and I'm, it's, it's sad for me to hear that they don't wanna move. It's two, two things when they're buying a house, is the location and the school district. You know, and I hate to hear when I'm saying, you know, let's go look here in Wauwatosa. I don't need to know, you know, they don't need to know why, are we, why, you know, but um, I'm, it hurts me to hear that they don't wanna move into this community because of what's going on. So we, we really gotta tackle and make sure that we keep bringing in people into this community and we do not lose um, our, our residents here to private schools or anything like that. But overall, we don't wanna have a referendum, so that's it.
I would push back a little bit, um, just on the part where it says we have a budget shortfall. I have, uh, I've met with Keith Brightman, our CFO. I have met with our CFO two times in one-on-one meetings. I've also attended the finance committee meeting. Um, and at no point have I been told from those experts that we are facing a budget shortfall. So I think it's really important that we share accurate information with our community. Um, we are one in eleven school districts with, uh, with, we have the highest rating. We don't short-term borrow, which is very uncommon for school districts. Um, in terms of Esser funding, I know there's been a lot of co- uh, conversation about that. We have one position that's planned to be a full-time permanent position. And that is a person who's charged with organizing and making sure that all of our mental health experts in our schools have time to collaborate and that they're working together. And so that each um, area of mental health, so social workers, psychologists, et cetera, they were, they were working in silos. And now Dr. Means hired a position using Esser funds to make sure there's coordination between all of those professionals. Um, and he has told me that that position will be permanent. The other positions with Esser funding, Esser funding was meant to help us lot, uh, make up for COVID loss. As we've said, we're moving past some of those things we had, challenges we had with COVID. So some of those positions may go away. I trust that Dr. Means and everybody in the district will work together to see which positions we have budgeted to continue funding, which positions maybe we don't need because we needed them for that short-term time, which those funds were meant to be used for. As a board member, I will always make sure when reviewing budgets that it aligns with our strategic plans and it aligns with making sure all of our learners have everything that they need to succeed.
Uh, so a little bit of background about me. Um, I've been in finance all my life. I work at a uh, community bank. I work every day with small business owners, working to grow their business, working to grow their legacy. I read financial statements every day. The district is projecting a one-point-six billion dollar deficit. If you look at the budget that the board has approved for the school year twenty-two to twenty-three, it's right there. I've been at the meetings with Mike Phillips. I've talked to other uh, people in uh, the administration at Fisher Building and that is the budget. If you look at year-to-date numbers this year versus last year, it is projecting that way and that is what is happening. Um, uh, positive, the board has gotten, every year the board requests from the state the maximum levy that they can. And for the past twenty years, they have been getting that, so that's a good thing. At the same point though, they did get four and a half, they did get five-point-four million dollars of Esser money. Um, some of that went into the fund balance as of last year for twenty-twenty-two. What they have been doing though is using Esser money, which is sunsetting next year, so it ends next year. They took that money and they hired new staff at the Fisher Building on three-year contracts. So they took money that's running out before the end of the contract is running out for the people that they're paying. Our enrollment is going down and our spending is going up. That's how you get, that's how you end up with the deficit. I'll give you a better example. Mary Jo, remember a couple of years ago when your daughter needed braces? Jeff was gonna get this promotion at the end of the year. You were gonna put the braces on the credit card. Jeff's promotion's gonna come at the end of the year and will pay the credit card off. Jeff's promotion didn't happen and you were stuck with braces on a credit card for a longer term than you thought. Using short-term money to pay a long-term debt. We are facing a deficit.
I hope you all don't get too much whiplash off this question, but I'm going to say that my understanding is that this is a financially healthy school district. That we have definitely one big challenge that we are, have just funded and need to continue to be very consistent about funding and that is the um, fair wages of our staff in the district. That has to be a priority. However, we can do that now without a deficit. We won't need to go into deficit for that. So that's the first part of the question is, is there one? And we don't all agree, but um, where I am, I, I see from having reviewed this with a number of school district leaders and gone to very many school board meetings, that we are in a good place, better than many of the financial institutions in this country. Um, as we know from this week. Um, I will say though, that it's what if is a really good question. You should elect people who have the experience to deal with that situation, should it happen. And I will tell you that I've now worked, for good or for bad, for three universities that have gone through uh, major compression and downsizing and really worked through the process of how do you do that? How do you do that budgeting issue without making the people who have been committed to your institution for a long time feel like you don't care about them? That to me is really the priority in making those kinds of decisions. I also served from twenty, uh, two thousand and seven to two thousand and thirteen as the president of the Hardtown Park Community Association that was building a twenty-acre park on the west side of Wauwatosa where we had no parks at all. And we had to make some really tough financial priorities because there just wasn't enough money. Among other things, two thousand and eight came along just as we were about to open the playground. And so priorities, thoughtful prioritization would be my answer to this question. And I want to know what do the students need, what do the staff and teachers need? And what are we funding that is making a positive impact on the district?
Shortfall, no shortfall. Um, so to be honest, I actually just recently had this, this last week, there was this uh, DPI presentation uh, which talked about school funding. It gave some information on school funding. Um, and I had an aside for that and I was told, all your questions will be answered this coming Monday, the twentieth, on exactly what the situation is from a financial standpoint. So there's a finance meeting this Monday, Fisher Building, five-thirty for anyone who's interested in hearing that. So to be honest, as a board member, right now, the information, I don't have all of the details, just the people I've met with. And I have conflicting information, just like the other people here. I'm still working to find out what the real answer is in order to be able to provide the appropriate response. I'm going to the meeting Monday. Maybe I'll send some of you there. I hope to be able to get a better sense of exactly what the issue is, where there, where, where there may be a shortfall or not. Um, and, and exactly how much it is. Ultimately, once we figure that out, then yeah, we have to look at priorities. We have to look at where we could potentially look to make cuts. We have to understand and ensure that regardless of what we decide, we have to prioritize students first, teachers, making sure that they have what they need to enable, to enable an excellent education for our students. But aside from that, I think this is where, when you get into these situations then, this is why we have to continue to be proactive. And I guess it kinda is gonna go to the next question, but in maintaining students, we need to maintain students in our district. We need to keep uh, individuals come feeling confident and comfortable in our schools so that we can continue to get young families to come to our district. That'll help, that'll help us to a- address any shortfalls because we'll be able to make up the revenue um, by adding pupils to our just, because we have seen uh, student enrollment decline and we wanna reverse that trend. And I, the way we do it is through providing excellent education.
So I'll say, um, we have an amazing CFO. He's just brilliant and um, uh, you know, he's done a fantastic job leading this district financially. I encourage you all to reach out to him possibly, go to the, go to the uh, financial meeting to understand where we are at. But it is my understanding that most districts want to operate at about twenty-five percent of their operational cost. And right now, Wauwatosa is operating at forty percent. So that's the money that we have in reserve. So this budget shortfall, I would tell you as a board member, it's not something that's been communicated to me from our CFO or anybody else on the, on the finance committee. So I don't believe that we are facing a budget shortfall, but that information will hopefully be uh, available to the public soon. I wanna talk about the Esser funds because I am proud of the way that our district used our Esser funds. Um, working as a public education teacher, I know that there are many districts that had to use those funds just to operate. We did not. We used those funds for what they were intended for. And that was to provide support for our students who are facing mental illness and had, and were impacted negatively because of COVID. That's what we used our funds for. We were able to hire supplemental positions that could provide resources to our students. So we should be proud of them. But now as a district, we do have to ask ourselves, was there value added with those roles? Do we want to continue those roles? Do we still see that our, our students are facing needs and were impacted by COVID? That those roles are addressing and we're seeing positive outcomes? So again, using data, you know, we need to be thoughtful. We need to make sure that we use data and evidence-based solutions when we're talking about the needs of our students. But I am proud that our district used those Esser funds the way that they were intended. And as a district and as a board, we're gonna need to decide if, if the value was added and we wanna keep those roles. The last thing that I'll add is the legislative advocacy committee has been working so hard because Wisconsin public schools are underfunded. That's the reality. They have been underfunded for a really long time, especially our special ed kids and, and, and our teachers. So I, I encourage everyone to look at, at the proposal that they made. All right, I've got a question of the evening. Question number eight, Mr. Zolokopar, you'll start this one as well. To any family or teacher who's considering leaving the Wauwatosa School District, what would you say to convince them to stay?
I would say, just wait. You know, we've been talking about a lot of negative things that's been going on and people have been seeing a lot of negative things on the news, but Wauwatosa, we have more than just negative things going on. I'm not sure, people realize that the basketball team just won conference over here, first time ever. Can you clap? Can you clap? But, don't clap on your head. But we won conference. We just hired a new coach for the football team. Uh, our kids, there, there's been some struggles, but listen up. I've been here seventeen years. It's a long time. And I don't plan to leave Wauwatosa. I know there's things going on in our district. But I think the community, this is just a wake-up call, maybe we're gonna come together. Our district is gonna get better. We gotta stay positive and we can't run from these problems and issues that we have right now going on. Just need to address them. We need to fix them. We need to problem-solve and, and work together. And all together as a community, board members, uh, teachers, staff, students, everyone. And I would just tell um, people, you know, we have a great community. We have a great thing. And yeah, we will get better. Things will improve. You do not need to leave. You leave, you should call, no, I don't wanna do that. Call me, but don't, I don't want you to leave. So that's not what it's about. It's about staying here, staying, sticking together, sticking this out. And uh, we will make sure the teachers are paid correctly around the Swan Lake School District. We will make sure that we, everyone is safe when they come to school. We will make sure that our budget is balanced. We will make sure that I can, can keep going. Okay, all right. That's it. All right.
I just wanna say that I checked my email with um, some people that I had in district leadership and I stand behind how I answered the previous question. So I encourage everyone to attend the meeting on uh, Monday and to reach out to uh, Dr. Means or Mr. Brightman to get some clarification on um, our budget. In terms of family or teachers who are leaving Wauwatosa, I would encourage them to go into our buildings. I have learned so much from just walking through the buildings and listening to teachers and listening to the principals. Um, it really, um, campaigning is hard. And uh, making time to go into all the buildings has been challenging. That's meant that I've been up at like four AM working for my full-time job to get things done. But um, it has energized me seeing all of the amazing things happening. Um, I've seen that service projects taking place. I've seen evidence of amazing teachers, lots of active learning, social emotional support happening, collaboration between the different specialists and teachers in the building. So I think if people saw what was happening in our um, in our buildings, that they would wanna stay and they would want to work together to make them stronger and to fix some of the problems that we do have. I also think everyone, if you're gonna be on social media, which maybe I'm uh, don't, but follow the district's Facebook page and, or Twitter, whatever you're on, because they are doing a, a better job at sharing the wonderful things happening in our district every day. And I think that would make people wanna stay. I'll also say that I've talked to lots of principals who have come back from retirement. Um, a principal was contacted by Dr. Means and I hope he doesn't mind me sharing this, but convinced him to come out of retirement to work in our, one of our schools' forties a week. And I think that's a testament to his leadership. I think that's a testament to how wonderful our community is. A teacher left a district that she was at for twenty-seven years to come teach in Wauwatosa because of our focus on equity and inclusion. And I think that those are the stories that need to be told.
There are so many, there are so many positive things going on in Tulsa right now. Cinderella here is great. Uh, both East and West Apsie teams are going to DC next month. Uh, the West PTA, thank you for putting this on. The other PTAs at the elementary schools that I've talked about. And I'll mention the West Forensics team too, I think, or that state maybe. Um, I love Tulsa. I wanna be a leader here uh, for the seven thousand students and seven hundred teachers that we have. I want every kid and every teacher to walk in the classroom each day and feel safe and be able to prosper. I want all the kids to have the best resource that, resources that they need to excel and for them to look back here at their time in Wauwatosa and some of the best memories they have. Um, we can do better. Our board needs to be better and we need to be better for the kids. We only get one shot at this and I wanna make the school district the best it can be. As I mentioned before, my background is in finance and I'm the only one here, I'm the only one that understands the situation that our district is in. I'm the only candidate with the background to fully understand that. I wanna be a good financial steward for the district's money and to ensure that your tax dollars are all handled responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, this is really important. I guess in a very personal level, I would say, well, my parents moved three times when I was in high school for my dad's job. And um, it made me a better person in some ways, but a very unhappy teenager. So I would say, what do your kids want? Um, and, and also what does your family need? And third, I would say, what is something that you really value about the school district? What is something, I've had a long list, so I don't need to repeat the list here. There is a lot of amazing work going on. But I also would want to give a window into um, what I've been learning as I've run for school board. Um, and also over the years as I've been a community change maker. The Madison Principal um, Review or Hiring Committee, I'm on that right now. In fact, tomorrow night I get to spend four hours meeting more candidates and I am so impressed. This district of other people who share is attracting incredible leaders, incredible teachers, incredible staff members. I've had the opportunity over the last six months to meet many of the people who have filled empty positions um, in the administration and they are working such long hours. They are recognizing some of the challenges that we face as a district and they are getting things done. And you know what? That is what people told me when they said, you should run for school board. And I said, why do you think I should run for school board? And they said, you get things done. And so I will say, that is what my goal would be as a school board member. And I would tell that person who's thinking of leaving, be a little bit patient. You moved here for a reason. You saw the beauty and the joy and the excellence of this. You saw the beauty and the joy and the excellence of this community. If it's not there right now for you, roll up your sleeves and figure out how you are going to get involved to make sure that it will be tomorrow.
Hold it, I'll after this. Just kidding. But from, you know, from, from my perspective, I think when, when we look at this, there are a ton of opportunity, right? We certainly, we certainly have the challenges. I mean, we have new people coming in because we're losing a ton of teachers every year. 192 have left in the last year. But we are bringing in people who are excited to come here. We had two new principals brought on last night. And they're young and they're hungry and they're excited about the opportunities. You know, I talked to the principal, the hero, over at Underwood. And he is very energetic and very excited about the opportunities that we have. And so what I would say to somebody who's thinking about leaving is saying, yes, we certainly had some challenges from a school district perspective. We have some things that we need to step up and address. And as a board member, I'm gonna put a focus on those things to make sure that we're moving forward in the right direction, that we're addressing those gaps and, and taking advantage of the opportunities that we have to drive us forward. And we have, and we're gonna take advantage of, you know, some of the work that Dr. Means and his team has done, some of the new hires that we have coming on and that the energy that they're bringing. And we're gonna take advantage of that and we're gonna continue to move forward and we're gonna continue to bring a better educational experience to students. The key that we need to do and that I will bring as a school board member is focus. Focus on the challenges that we have to address and turning them into opportunities. Focus on providing safe, inclusive learning environments. Focus on making sure that our, we can, we follow the process to update curricula, to be able to make the changes that we need to address the diversity that we have in our schools. And we're providing an educational experience that meets the vast differences of our students. Those are the things we have to do. Focus on understanding the data around discipline and where we can make improvements, where there's challenges with mental health, where people feel unstable, and using it to make informed decisions.
I can tell you that this is a thoughtful, compassionate community that cares about their schools. You know, I've been asked several times, like, you know, in light of what's happened in these past few months that you've been on the board, why are you running? You know, I've gotten so many, so much community feedback, some really hard to hear, some really unkind, but it shows me that this community is engaged and they care. And I think it's reflected in every single candidate up here. They are up here because they care. I would tell anybody that, you know, get involved. My husband and I, having just landed here a year and a half ago, got involved right away in coaching, in the PTA, and subbing in the schools. And we felt so welcome and we felt that we were able to make a positive impact. And, and that is what keeps you wanting to be around in a community like this. Our, our schools are doing incredible things every single day at every single school. And I can tell you, when I was looking at districts across Wisconsin to move to, what really struck me about Wauwatosa was its commitment to its students. You know, you see the pride flag hanging out there. And I think I read that West was one of the first high schools in the area that had a same-sex homecoming court, which is incredible, right? We are honoring our students. I've had the opportunity to visit with the Black Student Union. I've had the opportunity to visit with the Gender Sexuality Alliance. I just saw a student walking in today who was babysitting, who's a part of the feminist union. Like, there are incredible things happening in Wauwatosa. And if you don't see it, get involved. Get involved in whatever way you can. If it's volunteering for an hour at your, at your child's school. If, if you don't have children in the district, reach out and find out there are opportunities for you to come and engage in kids and after-school activities, take tickets, do something, but get involved because there are incredible things happening in this district and I am so proud to be a part of it.
All right. Thank you to all of the candidates. Now, if you'd like, feel free to applaud them. All right. I know it takes a lot to put in the time and putting in the work to make this happen. This concludes the Wauwatosa SPTA Candidate Forum. A recording of this forum will be posted within the next few business days. We also want to remind everyone that support our schools, Wauwatosa has an electronic voter guide available on their Facebook page. The Tulsa Compass, our student-run journalism publication, will also be publishing features on each of the candidates in the upcoming weeks. Thank you again to all of you for being here and to all the volunteers who made this happen. Please get out and vote on April 4th. Have a great night.